I'm getting ready to take all four of my kids to the library and I've decided I'm going to bring some things. My kids are a little bit older. Um, my oldest is sixth grade and my youngest is second grade, so. Second through six, I have four children. Um, so while they do their thing at the library, I've been able to actually get some of my own things done lately, which is nice. They're getting a little bit older and they're finding their place where they like to go and. I get time, so I'm gonna bring my personalized ESV study Bible. So this is a little bit smaller than the big one I usually carry around. It has all the same information, but the print is tiny. So let's see if we can even focus on that in here. Um, so I'll be bringing this with me and my She Reads Truth Bible. This is what I put all my notes in. I've been journaling in this for a little bit. Um, and uh, yeah, I'm just gonna keep going with it. I do have some printables that I'm gonna work on. So I'll either be working on Exodus or Hosea. These are already torn out. I started in this one a little bit. I'll probably get to finishing that one too, because yay, my kids give me some extra time. So I'll do that and I have this guy to wrap around this Bible. Um, it holds everything together. If you haven't seen that, it's just a hair tie that I use. And it's pretty simple. It's just a headband and it goes around this Bible and keeps it together. So my pages don't flap around inside my back, so these two will go with me. I'll bring my pens also, not that, that's trash. We'll bring that. I have these. Uh, I'm gonna try to record my session too, so I'll do that. I'll see if I can record a little bit without getting in the way of anybody or recording anybody who's trying to have a quiet moment alone at the library. But we'll see what I can do. These are all my pens. Favorite highlighters, these are diverse B highlighters. I use a standard ballpoint pen. Um, yeah, that's it. Just a little cheapy. So I will take all of this with me and I'll see you at the library. My pen's out. Microphone. iPad. And then here's my ESV study Bible. Let's see, oh, I'm bending it up here. So this is local library. It is like fall break, so there's lots of little kids around. So that's okay. My kids are having fun. They've seen a few of their friends in here. So that's good. Okay. Which one? I don't know. Hmm. I guess we could do Hosea. So I've done this book, studied in this book already, but I have not filled out a book introduction for it, so let's go ahead and do that. Uh, let's see. Where am I going? Back here. I need my glasses on. Can't see. I'm blind. Alright, so when I study, I can sometimes be, can feel a little haphazard. But I'm usually doing fine. There it is. Also, I do this. I'll mark my book with this little gold tab if I've studied it already. Okay, so I did study this book. It's all marked up. Let me actually, with my iPhone, I could do a top-down for you of what that looks like. So not much room in here for other notes, which will make it nice to actually put in a book introduction for it. That's what I do in here. So go back to the beginning. And. Right here. So if I ever studied this book again, I would want to have extra pages here. So that's what I'll do on this. Okay. So I could do a tip-in. And then that blank page there, which is really nice. So I think I'll go about it that way. Yeah, okay, so in. This little guy. Find Hosea. So the first thing I'll do is just kind of refresh my memory. This has an entire section. So I've already filled in the first part of this, which says um, time in history. And it was written in the eighth century BCE, so approximately seven sixty to seven twenty-two. Um, so yeah, I'm gonna leave that. And then the next portion I'll fill in is the theme. So it'll be the theme, the purpose, who is this addressing? Author, verses I write later as I study it if something jumps out. And um, a quote or a verse that I really like there, and then the genre. My She Reads Truth has a introduction in it already. Sometimes it's a little short on information, so that's why I like to use the ESV study Bible. It has a little bit more information going on in it. It also has maps, um, and the maps are really nice, because you can put the maps on the back of the paper here. So if you can look this area up, you know, and then just print the map, you could then put it on the back of your paper. So. Just fill the rest of this in. And this also has key themes in Hosea. I'm gonna say it wrong the entire time we're doing this, so ignore me. Um, but it has key themes here. Frequently refers to the Pentatech, the foundation of Israel's relationship to God. And then it'll give you verses to write down. If you wanted to write that down in this spot, you could. And also, um, it stresses divine sovereignty with God. Speaking in the first person, "I" almost a hundred times in the book. And then um, personal biography exemplifies the Lord's compassion. Um, there's isolation and exile, which is um, coming upon Israel. So I remember reading this right around the same time that um, Roe versus Wade was getting overturned. So it was interesting to read this book while culturally in my time period, people were debating over whether abortion should be legal. So it was always, it was pretty interesting to do that. Sorry, this table shakes, guys. I don't think there's much I can do about that. Go back here. Let's put a bookmark in here so I don't have to look for it again. Okay. All right, and the back. This is typically what happens during a study. You'll start to go off on looking for one thing and then end up doing something completely different the entire time. At least that's what happens to me. Okay, so. Minor prophets. Okay. So in this. It does. All of these sections for you. Alright, so there's the Pentatech history, or historical history, wisdom and poetry. And then the next one is major prophets, so like Isaiah, Ezekiel, Daniel. And then Hosea, I'm sorry, is the minor prophets, the New Gospel, then Acts, or, and then uh, um, Paul's letters and general letters. So we are in the minor prophets. So same minor prophets, but I feel like I need to look that up. I'm not going to right now, because that will lead me down a different rabbit hole. So let's see, what else do we have? That I wanna write about? Um, the theme. Hosea depicts Israel's unfaithfulness with a number of images from family and nature. Israel is like a promiscuous wife, an indifferent mother, an illegitimate child, an ungrateful son, a stubborn heifer, cow, a silly dove, a luxuriant vine, and grapes in the wilderness. Yet Israel's unfaithfulness and obstinacy are not enough to exhaust God's redeeming love that outstrips the human capacity to comprehend. So I only have this much space. I'm not going to write all that. But I will paraphrase it. Basically, um, Israel's very unfaithful and um, you know, acting like promiscuous wife and indifferent mother, an illegitimate child, and an ungrateful son. I'll write that down. Yet God's redeeming love outstrips the human capacity to comprehend all of that. So let me write that out and then we'll move on to the purpose. I will say I do not have good handwriting. Um, it's not smooth and pretty, so. You won't ever see me giving a handwriting lesson. Unfaithfulness. In all areas. Like a. Ungrateful son. Promiscuous wife. And I like the silly dove, so I'm gonna write that in there. Um. Yet God. God's redeeming love. Hmm. Outstrips. The human capacity. Oops. To comprehend. Okay. Um, comprehend what? Did I write that wrong? It's not enough to exhaust God's, yeah, Israel's unfaithfulness and obstinacy is not enough to exhaust God's redeeming love that outstrips human capacity to comprehend. That outstrips our ability to understand how He could still love us like that. So the purpose in this section here, um. The purpose, occasion, and background all work in tandem in this book. It pertains to the latter half of the eighth century BC and certain aspects of Baalism and the idolatry of the prophet Hosea. Minor prophet. The author. Who is a prophet? I did not grow up in a Christian home or Catholic home or religious home at all. So a lot of the terms when it comes to prophets and saints and things like that, I have to look up because I'm just not familiar. Um, so I won't automatically jump to seeing someone's name and assuming that they're a prophet. So I, I always have to be reminded of that. Um, that's just, it's just a part of me. So the latter days of the eighth century BC witnessed the rise of the Neon Assyrian king. I cannot say his name, the third. He was followed by several capable kings. And then um, where are we going here? Hosea's major concern was the worship of Baal. So the nation was crumbling. I'll write prophet. So I remember that this is a prophet who was writing this in his concern. Prophet was concerned. With. The worship. Of, oh gosh, this table is shaking. Sorry. Move that back. Hopefully it doesn't make anybody dizzy. Okay, and then. Um, Baal was the weather god worshipped in Syria, Palestine, who had control over agriculture and fertility, rainfall, and productivity. So, and. One major aspect of Baalism touches on the prophet's message and the religion's appeal, Baalism, to human. Um. Tendencies of drunkenness, things with animals, human. Sacrifice, mutilation, and uh. Family members getting together. Let's just call it that. Um. Hosea understands the strength of Baalism's appeal to the esdrive by way of ritual. Um, paid people for pleasure. I'm still not sure what will get um. Flagged if you talk about it, so, oh yeah. The amount of intimacy at one of the shrines understood most probably as an act of imitative magic. So Hosea's approach is dominated by his knowledge that God's people have been joined to the Lord. Hosea makes a number of references to Israel's past to remind them of that. Israel is the Lord's pride, but Israel has instead become joined to the Baals. So we're concerned with the worship of Baal. And. The. Behavior. It's. Required for rituals. Who is he addressing? This is Israel in Syria, Palestinian area. So he's addressing. He's trying to remind them. That they are. Joined to the Lord. And. He makes reference to Israel's past. And then worshiping the God, okay. And that by. Worshiping. Oh, oops. So I will mess up a lot. I will misspell things and that's okay. I'll scribble it out. These are for me. I don't expect my kids to ever like come through and read any of this, because. I don't, I don't expect them to. Also, if they did, they probably wouldn't understand what I wrote, because I have messy handwriting. Um, but it's here. They can be like, see, my mom has messy handwriting. Wasn't she amazing? Okay, worship of Baal is not just a violation. The Ten Commandments. So I'll put the verse that it's referencing for that, which is Exodus twenty-three. And then, that is also a betrayal of that intimate and endearing union that God made with His people. So we're talking about idolatry, adultery, transgression, um. And that, he says, the Lord's coming judgment will. He equates us to being God's wife and that we are committing adultery and things like that against God. Okay, okay. Hmm, I'll file that out. I messed up fingernail. Justifies the Lord's coming judgment with a litany of offenses, so. Okay, so genres, the minor prophets. Key themes are here. You could start writing all of these uh, references down, because they're just talking about how uh, Israel's relationship to God is referenced in the Pentatech. And then, let's see. Hosea stresses divine sovereignty with God, so that again could be in key themes here. Um. The overall genre of the book is prophecy. Gosh, I can't write today. Prophecy and most of the book consists of oracles of judgment. And what else? Okay, with poetry. This portion here, this little quote, um, again, my handwriting's really bad, but the quotation mark there. You would put down whatever jumps out at you as you're reading it. That's why I made these blank and as a printable, so you could decide what was important to you in the moment when you're reading. Those things always change. When I reread a book, um, new things pop out depending on where I'm at in life, what's going on. Now, so, okay. Yeah, so I'm basically done. And then I'm just gonna put this in my Bible and then we'll work on Exodus. You could put it in this first page right here, and then you'd have more room for notes. It could be a journal entry page. It could be, you know, just something really casual. But you would glue the edge, so you'd put glue stick right along here, like if this were a glue stick, you would run this across on there and then just stick it in. And that'd be it. You could tear the edges. I'm gonna leave it for now, because I didn't bring any washi tape or anything, but. I'd probably put it in here, because this is where I actually don't have any writing space and that's where I would want it to go. So I think I would put it like this. Like that. That way I could write on the side and fold it open. Yep, so that's where that'll go. So now, let's go to Exodus. This guy. I'm already. I've already filled in part of this, so I started reading this right after Genesis, right after I was basically saved. Okay, so in the She Reads Truth Bible, there is introductions here that you could just straight copy it from. It talks about the timeline. It gives you a little bit of background. It gives you the message and purpose. It even gives you a few verses to look up. Um, so you could just stick with this. I'm just extra. I like to have extra. I want my book to be bigger, so I'm filling out extra pages for that. So let's see what this says in the timeline here. Okay, time in history for Exodus. Uh, along with the other four books in the Pentatech, Exodus has long been considered the work of Moses. So we're gonna write Moses for the author. And then, um. Let's see. Moses could have written Exodus anytime during the forty-year span after the Israelites finished constructing and dedicating the tabernacle at Mount Sinai, so fourteen forty-five, and before his death in the land of Moab, um, around fourteen oh-six B.C. So we're just gonna write that. And the time Moses wrote it. Between. Fourteen forty-five B.C. and fourteen, oops, fourteen oh-six B.C. The events in Exodus pick up where Genesis ends with the death of Joseph around eighteen oh-five B.C. And conclude with the building of the tabernacle in fourteen forty-five B.C. I'm gonna have to phone a friend. I've confused myself. So we're gonna skip the date part. We're gonna go with the purpose. The Book of Exodus shows God at work for people of Israel, so that He might dwell among them. God rescued the Israelites in order to make Himself known, not only by exercise of His power, but also through an ongoing covenant relationship based on His patience, grace, and forgiveness. The record of what the Lord did for the Israelites provides grounds for them to recognize Him as their God who deserved their complete loyalty and obedience and made clear to them their identity as God's people. So I will paraphrase that. I'm gonna look in here and see if it says anything different. So I'm going to the ESV study Bible. And go to the front here. And let's just see. We have dates and historical conduct text. So the date of Israel's Exodus from Egypt is primarily chronological problem. The book contains few clues to solve, while the narrative refers to the cities that the people of Israel were building in Egypt and the length of their time in Egypt. Um, it does not include the name of any king of Egypt to which it refers, nor does the Book of Genesis uh, record the names of the pharaoh who knew Joseph. So the content of the book clearly indicates that the Exodus and its time of year are important for Israel's identity, since Israel's calendar. Reoriented around the month in which they came out of Egypt. But Exodus refers to these events as if its hearers and readers were familiar with them and thus selects and shapes the details of the account in which, in accord with its communicative purpose. has indicated in the article on the date of Exodus some scholars, which from from the figure of four hundred eighty years, first king six long, for the time since the Exodus of Solomon's fourth year. Okay, whatever the date of Exodus, the question is not necessarily about whether the numbers given in the Old Testament are reliable, but rather about trying to understand their function. Okay? So, again, time period. That's interesting. That's probably why I was so confused with the first reading, cause it wasn't actually giving me a complete date. So I'll figure that out later. Cause I wanna try to get as much of this done as I can. I have a time limit. Um, so the theme is overarching theme of Exodus is the fulfillment of God's promise to the patriarchs that he would make their descendants a great nation, so overarching theme. To fulfill God's promise. That he would make their descendants a great nation. This is carried out despite the opposition of the greatest superpower in the ancient world of the time, Egypt. And despite the unbelief and disobedience of the people themselves, Exodus shows that the success of the Exodus must be ascribed first to the power and character of God, who remembers his promises, punishes sin, and forgives the penitent. Is that repentant? Penitent. I have to look that one up. I'm gonna write that down. Let me write that down on another piece of paper. Okay, penitent. And second, it highlights both the faithfulness of Moses, who followed divine instructions equally, and his prayerfulness. In it is his prayer that leads to victory over Amalek and his intercessions that persuades God to pardon the people after they had begun worshipping the golden calf. Okay, so overarching theme is to fulfill God's promise. Their descendants would be a great nation. And I'm all worried about whether I'm breathing into this microphone. All weird. Um, okay. People themselves, Exodus shows that the success of Exodus must be ascribed first to the power and character of God. So... The success of the Exodus is because of the character of God. It's getting crowded in here. I came in with empty tables all around me and now there's about fifteen people near. So it's pretty good. Okay, and then other key themes. The events and instructions narrated in the Book of Exodus are explicitly framed as the Lord remembering his covenant promises to Abraham. So, let's look at the purpose here. Exodus is the second book. And it picks up the narrative of Genesis by focusing on the time when the sons of Jacob have grown into the people of Israel. The first half of the book records events that fulfill the promise to Abraham that his descendants would sojourn in the land that was not their own, be afflicted for four hundred years, and then come out by the Lord's hand with numerous possessions. So that's in Genesis fifteen, verse thirteen through fourteen. And the second half of the book narrates the events surrounding the covenant being revealed, confirmed, broken, and renewed, and records the covenant instructions that the Lord revealed to Israel through Moses at Mount Sinai. The instructions began with the Ten Commandments and included a lengthy section detailing the specifics for the construction of the tabernacle and its service. But this is not the totality of the Lord's covenant instructions, which are recorded further in both Leviticus and Numbers before Israel finally leaves the region of Mount Sinai for the land of Canaan. And that's in Numbers. So Numbers describes how the generation who came out of Egypt ended up wandering in the wilderness instead of entering Canaan. Then the Book of Deuteronomy records Moses's reaffirmation of the covenant. So recorded in Exodus three Numbers and appeals to the next generation. So, okay, so the purpose is is it just to say God's always with us? And to confirm the prophecy over the next past four hundred years? I'm not completely sure. Anybody else confused? I am. Oh, when I start reading too much, I get really confused. Okay. So what I might do is just wait. I need my friend. Um, and then who's this addressing? So this is for us, right? It's for Israel. It's for now Christians, but it's for everyone. The Book of Genesis showed the plight of human race and its need for salvation, the call of Abraham, then Jacob and Egyptians. I'm skim reading, just trying to worshiping of the golden calf. And the New Testament sees the Old Testament Exodus story as the pattern for ministry and death of Christ in him. God dwelt among us and we have seen his glory. Okay. Then accompanied by the cloud of God's presence. Okay, I want more. I want more in here for the purpose. And who this is addressing? Let's see. I've been surrounded by more people, so I hope this microphone doesn't pick up too much of the other table's conversation. That's always fun. Okay. So Exodus emphasizes throughout the book that Yahweh has remembered his covenant with Israel and will bring them out of Egypt. I wanna write that. Um, emphasizes. There we go. And throughout the back. That Yahweh has remembered his covenant. One of the reasons I created, uh, my own printable is because a lot of the other ones had the information already filled in and that's fine. But I don't learn that way. I'll just leave it as somebody else's information already filled in and then I'll put it in my book and I'll never read it for myself. So I would pretend to understand what was going on instead of doing my own research like I'm doing right now in this and figuring out what I need to write down, what I need to know. So that's why I left these blank, because I know I'm not alone. I'm not unique in that way of needing to learn by reading and writing and doing it for myself. So that's why these pages are blank. And, um, also you wouldn't want me to fill these in. I don't know what I'm doing half the time. I'm just guessing. So yeah, that's the other reason to not fill these in for you and you fill them in. Sorry, I think my table's shaking again. Okay. Emphasizes throughout the book that Yahweh has remembered his covenant. And let's see, lead his people out of Egypt and instruct them on how they are to live through Moses. Thus, while Moses probably did not write everything, um, for example, the narrative of his death. And while there also appears to be language and references that have been updated for later readers, the Book of Exodus is best read as recorded and composed primarily by Moses. Okay, so who is this addressing? For now, I'm just gonna write that it's addressing Israel. Because it doesn't mention anyone else. So that the Israelites will recognize God. I'll put that in the purpose. Oops. The other thing, if messing up bothers you, print a new page. So it's kinda nice to have that option available. So you can just print another one and then give the extra portion of Genesis to a friend. Or turn it into scrap paper for something else. Okay, and so Israel's recognize God and all he's done. Well, that and all he has done. And then, um... Yeah, I think, um, that's all I'm gonna write there. Exodus, this is history, right? So Exodus is an adventure story. It features a cruel villain, the Pharaoh, uh, an unlikely hero, Moses, overwhelming disaster, spectacular deliverance crossing the Red Sea, a long journey, and a mountaintop experience when Moses received the Ten Commandments. And a grand finale, the presence of God coming down to the Ark of the Covenant, filling the tabernacle with glory. So, the basic framework of the book is epic. Epic begins with, epics begin with a nation in crisis. This epic opens with the Israelites languishing in slavery and there would be and there would be deliverer born under the threat of death by drowning. So the story proceeds. Exodus is also the story of the founding of a nation. Ten Commandments. Within its epic framework, Exodus also contains a wealth of subgenres: rescue story, calling story, human divine encounter, diplomatic negotiations, plague story, genealogy, uh, institution of a festival, song of victory, travelogue, uh, miracle story, legal code, case law, covenant renewal. And that's why, cause it's easy to look up and just confirm for myself. All these highlights. This is my highlight test page. So always do a highlight or test page, cause you never know. The pen might look good on other paper and then you put it in a different Bible and yeah. Okay, so Pentatech, Old Testament, and it's an epic. Okay, I'm just gonna write that. Pent- Pentatech. Old Testament. It is an epic tale. It's also our history. And then authors Moses, so for that you could take what I already wrote in Genesis. And I'll just write down what I have there. Hey bud. Doing okay? Did you find things?
Yeah, I was upstairs. I was on the computer looking for car box and I was like...
Nothing?
Nothing. I was grew up so...
Interesting you. Okay, okay. Almost done. Give me just a few minutes and we'll be finished, okay? Will you get your brother around the troops, please? Okay, so we'll write down Moses and when he lived and when he died again. His age is here, so he lived, was born around fifteen hundred B.C. Go back to Genesis, cause it'll talk more about him up here. So... There is timelines in the ESV Study Bible as well as the maps and everything else. So yeah, so this is all I have so far. We're getting ready to go. All my people are coming back, so I will put this in my Bible when I get home. Hi guys. You're ready? Okay. If you stuck around for that whole Bible study session and the chaos that is me, thank you. Um, I just wanna say that I am not trying to teach you what the Bible says. I am trying to show you and encourage you that even if you don't know what the Bible says, you can figure it out. You can do it in your own crazy, unorganized way, just like I do, or you maybe you're way more organized than I am. That's okay. I'm just hoping that it encourages you to kinda just open your Bible and try to read it, try to understand it, start digging, start asking questions. Find your people who are there to help you. I have great friends. And if you don't have that, find a pastor or join a Bible study. There's tons of online Bible study groups that you can go to. My goal is just to encourage you to do what you like, do what you love. And you don't have to be an expert doing it. So you can tell through my session, I have no idea some days what I'm doing. And that's probably because I'm overly tired and kinda doing something out of the ordinary with this one especially. I was, um, my kids are coming. I was doing, um, something new. I'm recording myself in public. Never, ever, ever, ever in my life would I have done this before. So I'm glad I did it. I know a little bit more that I'm, I'm gonna be okay if I do it again, because it was actually a really good experience. I it wasn't too loud in there. My microphone worked just great as I'm looking back through the edit. So don't be discouraged if you don't know what you're doing. Try it anyways. I don't know what I'm doing half the time, but I like what I'm doing, so I'm gonna keep doing it. So do that. Just try. It's okay. It's all good. Yeah. Thanks for watching if you got to the end, all the way here. Yeah. Thanks for watching. If you got to the end all the way here, I appreciate it.